I'd like to call to meeting the regular scheduled Tiverton Town Council meeting for Monday, March 10th, 2014. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach?
Present.
Counselor Ruda?
Present.
Counselor Shabbat?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor Rodrick?
Present.
Counselor DiMediris?
Present.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes ma'am.
All present.
Okay, the consent agenda. No minutes are available. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Street Advisory Committee, Wastewater Management Commission, Arts Council, Library Services, Planning Board III. Correspondence receive and file. Tiverton Land Trust, awarded accreditation by Land Trust Accreditation Commission. City of Newport, mayor invitation to join the 58th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, March 15th, 2014. Newport City Council Resolution requesting Rhode Island Congressional delegation support a sustainable mechanism for funding the Federal Highway Trust Fund. Approval of tax assessor's abatements. Town Administrator. Department Monthly Report, February 2014. Tiverton Garden Club. Proclamation, Tiverton Cleanup Week. Barbara Pelletier, February Meeting Report of Newport and Bristol County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Kate Michaud, Administrator Officer, Report of Activities for February 2014. Any items to be removed?
I've got CA 3B and CA 6.
Mr. President, I would like to remove CA 2E. And from E, CA 5.
I'm sorry Jim.
CA 5.
I move we approve the consent agenda, save for those items.
We have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, we'll begin with CAE. Planning Board.
You know, I'm just looking, I don't see Kate Michaud here. This might be a quick thing. I was just curious if Kate had received comments back from the various commissions and boards that the challenge grant went out to for review and comment. I don't know if...I was just trying to see if we were keeping the process moving along there.
I don't know whether...I'm not sure whether Kate's coming tonight, so why don't I just jot it down and I'll ask her to send by email response.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept item CA 2E.
Second.
We have a motion on second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, CA 3B. Mr. Pelletier?
I have lost my place already, but it's the annual invitation to march in the...here it is. 58th Annual St. Patrick's Day Parade in Newport. I have done this for the past three years, and while it can be exhausting, it is good fun, and if you wear appropriate footwear, it can also be pain-free. It's actually this Saturday, so it's kind of short notice, but 9 o'clock at Mass at St. Joseph's Church, 10 o'clock is a light Irish breakfast in City Hall, and then 11 o'clock you step off City Hall steps onto the parade route. And there's usually a pretty good turnout of local ambassadors, as it were, and I encourage you all to join me marching. And hopefully the weather will be cooperative. That's all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, CA 6.
Five. Oh, Jim's got five first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is just real quick. I just saw in the monthly report, DPO, that they had graded Cynthia Avenue a second time. I was just wondering about the...how the condition of the street is. Is it how bad it is grading it the second time? Like, does it look like possibly repairing it or?
Mr. Berluci?
Yeah, currently it's smooth enough for us to sand and plow without any major problems. But it is the second time we've been out there, and it's going to be prone to pick up more holes and more gibbets as the thaw comes and the rain come and the weather turns to spring. So I imagine we'll be out there again, but maybe not. We'll see.
How's the...how does the street seem when you're grading it? Is it workable or do you have to?
Yeah, well, we bring that black gravel we make down there and fill in the potholes. We don't bring a roller, we just bring our backhoe in a truck and roll it with the back tires and fills it in for the time being. But it's not going to last for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, now CA 6.
Yeah, CA 6. It's the announcement of Spring Cleanup Week. There's a proclamation. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll give you the salient details of it. Cleanup Week this week commences on May 3rd from 9:00 to 2:00 at Grinnell's Beach. There are no real salient details here except that, but if you want to get involved...oh, it's Saturday, May 3rd through May 10th, but the kickoff is at Grinnell's on May 3rd from 9:00 to 2:00. And there's bags there, and usually they have other supplies as well, an orange hat. No?
I spoke to the woman that is running it, and she said to leave the rest out. They weren't going to be providing gloves and stuff.
Okay, all right. So they're not going to be doing that anymore. So bring your own orange gloves and hats and things. But it's a good day of exercise, and you get to help pick up trash, which is always exciting. So I encourage everyone to participate.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey, public forum announcements, comments, questions. Mrs. Pelletier?
Barbara Pelletier, I pointed out, we need to get rid of these snowflakes, and we need sort of a rallying cry for the town. And if anyone can come up with some sort of great slogan, I'd be happy to...I'd love to hear it. I've come up with a couple, and I will give you sheets, and if you would indicate your preference or an alternative, I'd really appreciate it. And you could leave it in the office, and I can pick them up within the next week or so. One of them is "Tiverton, Better Tomorrow, Honoring the Past," or "Tiverton, Looking to the Future, Honoring the Past." And I mean the way-way past.
Not last week.
The one that hopes to attract the tourists and the everything else that goes along with the good things. So I do hope you take the time to do that. And also, I was thinking, and it had been pointed out to me by Mr. Hart, that the police station would be a great dispensing for information. And at one point or another on the highway, we did have a sign saying "Police" at the Fisher exit. Maybe if we ever replace that sign, I hope, we could also put information. And if Chief Blakely would be kind enough to keep some information, some information at the police station, which is open 24 hours, I think that would be wonderful. I think it would, you know, just toenail into us being very, very efficient.
Chief, could you get a sandwich board and maybe?
No, I don't want a sandwich board. But I do have something that I can...I will warn you that is coming up. Ipswich, which is a community on the shore, has instituted DNA testing for dog poop. So they reduce the waste at the walking things, and it sounds crazy. And I did call animal control. And it eliminates...because I guess there's a big push on the natural environment people that dog poop is actually toxic, so they want to get it off the runways into the rivers and all of that. So Ipswich has this new program where if you don't pick up after your dog and somebody reports you, they DNA test it, and it's a...I think it's an $85 fine, which amply pays for the whole thing. And it's a win-win, and heck, all you need to do is find somebody once or twice, or just a few people in the community, and people do become aware of it. So maybe that...I was in touch with the company that has this program. They're anxious to get into communities, and per test, it's $35, but they're negotiable on that. So maybe we could be an exemplary community and the first one in Rhode Island to do that, which gives us bragging rights for being good at something. It's just a thought. But it's as bizarre as it sounds, we will be at the cutting edge.
Okay.
Yeah, you know.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't take my dogs out on the street, and I pick up after them, but a lot of people do, and I think if you do, you need to be responsible.
Yeah, you know, obviously you've gathered some of the information. If you could get that to the town clerk.
And that way, if it works, you can take the dogs on the recreation path there, and that sort of negates the whole, oh, I don't want my dog walking, where people walk. It's worth considering, as crazy as it sounds.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, we do have signs on both sides, 20 Port North and South, indicating the police station. If there's some type of information, pamphlet is something we want to put in the lobby. We'll gladly have a spot for that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. How about one of those red flags in front?
Just a thought, how about no?
Before we go in, I see Mrs. Michaud is here. I don't know if you...did you hear the question? I don't know if you had come in.
No.
I was just...I had asked a question on one of the planning board ministers. No, that's totally fine. Whether you have gotten any or all of your responses from the boards and commissions that you sent out the challenge grant out for comment on?
We did send them out for comment, and we didn't receive any comments back.
You did not receive any comments? Okay.
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kate. Okay, public hearings and public presentations. Donald Mediris, Annual Report Building Code, Board of Appeals.
Mr. President, he will not be attending, but the report does state on the end, if you've read it, it says there was no variance requests or appeals during the 2013 calendar year. He was on...apparently not. He is that way.
DPW Director Steven Berluci, Public Input Hearing for RIP DES Rhode Island Pollution Discharge Elimination Systems, Small MS 4 2013 Annual Report Required by RITM.
Good evening. Thank you. Tonight I have with me Matt Lindcourt from ESS Consulting Firm. He's an environmentalist, and they've been with us a few years now with our stormwater recording and tracking and everything, annual reports that we put out. What you have in front of you is the 2013 version of a stormwater annual report that's required to be turned into DEM every year to really upgrade the blocks and bocadils and really tracks how many catch bases we have in town, how many times we clean them, how many times we sweep the road, right down to the real more, well, as important issues as the TMDL that we received for the polling of Mount Hope Bay or the Summerfield area and the Robert Ray area. So all this information is really upgrading information from last year, and we have to have a public input hearing to hear any input from the public, and that will complete the report, and we can turn it into DEM. There's nothing really changed from last year, except the reporting of the facilities update plan that was put in by wastewater interfaced with the issue that we had at DPW in the stormwater side, where DEM now is looking at a plan to upgrade the area, and they're satisfied with that plan. Obviously, it has to be implemented and completed, but it's kind of taken the heat off of the DPW a little bit. But we're going to continue to investigate illicit discharges and try to track where this pollution is stemming from and coming from. It'll be a follow-up program through a program we had last year. We tracked stuff on the east side of Main Road, and now we got to track the state system on Main Road, and then the west side of Main Road and that area, and try to nail stuff down a little bit. We're hoping to purchase that camera system because we want to run cameras up the pipes to see if there's illicit discharges. That was part of the suggestion by DEM, and we have the opportunity to get that done. And that's where we're at. Matt put the...put them together for us as he has done for the last couple of years, and he has the fine details if you have any questions.
Okay, before we go there, I will ask, is there anything from the public? Is there anything from the public? Is there anything from the public? Seeing none, okay, we will continue. Counsel?
Mr. President, I just have a quick question. Steve, I'm hoping you can just clarify a couple of things, or one thing, actually. So there's no page numbers on here. That would be a piece of feedback. We could get page numbers on this thing. So I'm looking at the section that says Minimum Control Measure Number Three, and if you go one, two, three, four pages into that section, at the top of the page, there's a grid that talks about the number of illicit discharges identified in 2013, number of illicit discharges eliminated in 2013, so on and so forth. And I was having a little bit of a difficult time kind of making the numbers match up here. So it says number of illicit discharges identified in 2013, two. Number of illicit discharges eliminated in 2013, one. However, if you go down, it says total number of illicit discharges remaining unresolved at the end of 2013, zero. So if there were two illicit discharges identified, one eliminated, how can...I'm just trying to figure out how we got to zero in terms of unresolved remaining at the end of 2013?
We would ship it to DEM once it's identified. If John Lindcourt can resolve it at his level and doesn't have to send it to DEM to the next level for enforcement or whatever they may want to do. I think that...would that cover the one?
Yeah, that's also zero.
Yeah, that's also zero.
I'm not sure if that came from an illicit discharge that was identified but was...turned out not to be an actual illicit discharge. I don't remember. I'm just trying to figure out if there's an illicit discharge that remains unsolved or unresolved to some extent that requires some attention.
You know, John Lindcourt put these numbers together with Matt. So I'm going to have to check that before we send this in, and I'll finalize that.
Okay, great.
I'm sure that if there's an illicit discharge hanging out, that there's a red flag on, and we chase them down and try to settle them, and if they don't, they get kicked out to the DEM resolution.
All right.
But Matt, we'll mark that and we'll check that for any other things.
Great, thank you.
Steve, you talked about the camera. Have we gotten the camera yet?
No, it was in front of the Budget Committee as part of my budget, and they didn't cut it out, so hopefully it's going to move forward at the end. We have not got it yet. It wouldn't be available until July 1st when this budget passed, but they're still holding it for us, and it should work out.
Okay. And I'll be honest, I did not read the entire thing. But are we still having issues down at Mount Hope Bay?
Yes.
And still?
I would say so. We're going to to the septic issues are settled. They're just...it's a question of ledge and not enough room and high water tables for septic systems in that area. And when we get the heavy rains, you just can't hold all of that water, septic, and it comes out, and I think it ends up getting into the system somehow, and the drainage system, and it ends up like a point discharge, you know, to specific points, and that's what we've got. So it's not a new...it's not new. Everybody knows about it, and it'll be solved over time, you know.
Anything else from the council? Does this require a vote?
Yes, it should accept it before that.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the report pending the clarification with Mr. Lindcourt on the one item that I raised regarding unresolved or potential unresolved illicit discharges in 2013.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in...discussion?
Yeah. When does the...when does this application or report, rather, go to the state? Is that timeline?
Tomorrow morning.
Okay, so you don't need our approval to do that? You're...
Well, your approval tonight, vote, and then we'll get that certification.
As an addendum, as a correction.
As an addendum, and it'll go in the question room in the morning.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks for coming back. Larry Parr, Presentation, South Coast Rail Project. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much for inviting me. I know I'm not a talker, but I kind of don't feel that way because I grew up here and I graduated from Shepherd High School.
Welcome back.
I now live in Fall River on Forest Street, and for the past two years, I've been very much involved with the South Coast Rail project that's come a long way for a long time. We're in a position now where Governor DeVall Patrick has thrown his support behind this. Representatives have thrown their support behind this, and my objective here is to regionally get everyone behind this project, and I feel that it involves Tiverton as well. I have some handouts here. I'm not really sure if you received.
Give them to the town clerk. Thank you.
Cut this down. There's a little...it's an invitation. It's an invitation...one of the documents is an invitation to an update meeting that's going to take place in Fall River on April 3rd at the Good Shepherd Parish. It's run by Representative Alan Sylvia. It's a neighborhood group meeting with John and Bob with him. Gene Fox from the South Coast Rail Project will come down and update everyone there on where the project stands. I don't know if you've read in the paper, but the Massachusetts House has voted $2.2 billion for the project. It's been voted on as well. So this is the closest point that we've ever come to, to making this a reality. As a resident, as a 27-year employee of FedEx, I cannot understand why these connections went away in the first place. They should have always been maintained. Why they weren't, I don't know. But we're fighting to get them back, and I truly believe that this is a very regional project. I've spoken to Representative Edwards. He's in full support of it. He likes the connection with the efforts he's putting into the buses. And all of this, the pieces are all here, and what we need is regional support to continue this along, should there be another governor that runs for office and doesn't want to support. We don't want that to happen. It's come a long, long way. The funding's there. All of our representatives, Representative Fiola, Representative Sylvia, Representatives in Westport and all over unanimously voted to appropriate this money towards this bill. We want to keep this momentum going. So what I'm asking the Tiverton Council is if maybe you could talk amongst yourselves and come to some type of resolution. What I'd like to see is all of you go to the update meeting if you could, but at the very least, possibly produce a document that shows if you're in support of this or not. Well, I'd like to be able to use that document. I'm not part of the South Coast Rail team. However, I have worked with them for a couple of years very strongly, raising the awareness regionally. And I would like to be able to present that document to the South Coast Rail team in order for them to use it in a fashion that they see would help them along the way.
Okay.
So that's why I'm here today.
Well, thank you so much.
And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Well, I will...any questions?
It's April, April the 3rd.
It's Thursday, April 3rd.
And Good Shepherd is...
It's the Good Shepherd Parish.
Saint Pat...Saint Patrick's.
On that...on this document right here, it has the address. Like, again, Representative Sylvia is the one that runs the meeting. This representative has thrown so much help and support on making this project go that you just can't do enough to help them. And that's why I'm here. That's why I'm here.
I'm going to go to this meeting, and I've spoken to a couple of people in Fall River about this proposal. From your viewpoint or your group's viewpoint, what do you see the long-term involvement of Tiverton in this project? And I say that because I've heard a couple of people say that the right-of-way for the railway continues right into Tiverton, and the right-of-way still exists, and that there are in fact long-term plans out there somewhere that actually show the railway coming into Tiverton.
There absolutely are. The funding for these things are tremendous. To have the funding to get it to the point where it's coming to Fall River, and it's also going to go into New Bedford, the funding for it is tremendous. This is the reason why I say I don't understand why it was ever let go in the first place. We had it here. My mother and father, at 90 years old, they live in the city, they would jump on this train and go ballroom dancing in Boston every weekend. Councilor Pat Casey, Fall River City Council, was a student, and her class used to jump on the train and go to Boston for class trips. So it's...I don't understand why this was never supported all along the way. If you look at regionally, Fall River, New Bedford, and Taunton are the only metropolitan areas not regionally connected with the commuter rail system. And economically, for economic development, I think that's hurt us tremendously. I think it's part of the reason why we have not been able to attract businesses the way we should, and I also think that for resident-wise and job-wise, it would help tremendously. I've done a lot of research on the Long Island Railroad, and railroad's all over the country, and the economic development of those places that have the commuter rail, it definitely...it's an improvement. Definitely improvement. So I think that this is our closest point to getting this back again. And how it affects Tiverton is there are tons of people that go through Fall River in order to get access to Boston. Are the plans eventually are going to go there? Would they go there immediately? I don't think so. But it's a closer point to work from. And from that point, we need to...we need a regional support for this thing.
Well, even if I understand the plans that are before the Massachusetts General Court, it's the...the second terminal actually would end at the Braga Bridge, so you're only 10 minutes from Tiverton as it is, even without the extension into Tiverton.
The Route 79...I sit on a task force for the Route 79 project where the bridges are coming down, and the South Coast Rail is included in that plan. The architect's drawings of how this boulevard, you know, once these ramps come down and they create the boulevard, it doesn't even look like it's Fall River. It looks like something like...it's very exciting program. It's a very exciting plan. And South Coast Rail is included in there. It connects what they call shared-use path, shared-use paths for bicycles and pedestrians that connect to the existing bridge that goes over Sunset now. And it's just...if I had the pictures here, you'd be amazed at how it looks. It's just absolutely fabulous. So there's a lot of exciting things happening here for everyone, really, regionally in this area, and I'm asking if you agree with what I'm saying, if maybe you could come to a consensus and create a document that will help this project along that I can present to Gene Fox from South Coast Rail, and they could use it hopefully to show support. I have...I'm a Federal Express employee, so for 27 years, I've been able to kind of stick my nose... my nose in everybody's business. If you're a business, I go in there, I want to know what you do, what can we do to help you? If you're a resident trying to make connections, we do the same thing. And these connections are so clear to make in order to, to move things along, that I just, it's beyond me how we ever have let this go. And this is the reason why I stay here today.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'll request that we put it on the March 24th agenda, for discussion and possible resolution.
Could I just ask a quick question? Is there a tentative timeframe? And I, I need to go to the mass.gov website to research this a little bit more, but is there a tentative timeframe that's wrapped around that funding to actually, you know?
The funding comes in stages, as the project, as the project progresses, the funding comes in stages. The timeframe that we would look at would probably be 2016, '17. The Army Corps of Engineers has approved the plan, and it's, it's just progressed so much in the last two years, it's, it's really becoming a reality. But the timeframe you're looking for as a project, would the train actually be there? If everything goes good, and I'm sure there'll be mitigating circumstances, that could delay is still a bill, I would say the earliest you're looking at is 16, '17.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you again. Here the town council, sitting as the Board of Licensing, non-advertised license. James Albin doing business as Phantom Fireworks, 527 Main Road, requests approval of holiday and fireworks license from June 15, 2014 to July 15, 2014, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Mr. Albin here?
Good evening, James Albin, Phantom Fireworks.
Hey, been here before, and, Chief? Chiefs?
This, this is actually being applied for in advance, the inspections won't come till after they actually get set up and where the locations are.
Is this a new, new location?
We're actually moving across the street, the place we had last year is permanently leased, so we're actually just moving directly across the street into the brick building, a spot that used to be the hot dog shop.
Okay. So, we'll start with Chief Lloyd?
And, and we did have another company, these two were opposing companies, there was one on one side of the street, one on the other side, but again, we don't have his floor layout, his plans yet, and like we've done with all the fireworks permits, we need to know what's being stored on premises, the holding in the truck, and also that the chief knows about that too, for his security reasons. So with that, we would put those same restrictions we had on, from before.
Okay.
One thing I would ask, in any of these areas on Main Road that have sidewalks, anyone putting sandwich signs, they are prohibited by town ordinance, that they keep them back on their property instead of blocking driveways and traffic obstructions.
Yep. Okay.
And is this just fireworks?
It's retail sale, ground-level fireworks, road item legal.
Okay.
Okay, anything else from the council? Anything? Shh.
No, it's all subject to meeting legal requirements of the chiefs before any...
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we grant a retail sales fireworks license, I'm sorry, fireworks license and a holiday license for the term of 61514 to 71514 to Phantom Fireworks, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
DNL Corp., 180 Main Road, 479 Main Road, advertised for public hearing for license renewal, only renewed through March 1st, 2014.
Mr. President, this is the old Buddy's Building that he had taken over, and there was extensive renovations that needed to be, so we had granted the license before for just the three months to see, to make sure advances were coming on this, so.
Mr. President, I would recommend another three-month extension on the license.
Okay, being a, advertised for public hearing, so we would just extend this from March 114 to June 23rd.
Is that a reasonable timeline?
His response seemed to say that he should be ready for business by midsummer, that now we can advance quicker, so I would say that sounds...
Yeah, we don't have that.
...each check at that time.
Huh? Oh, I can see, three months will, will suffice?
Yeah, I try just to need a, you know, more time to do something more, yeah.
What? I mean, what's our liability if we push it out, you know, five or six months?
It's not issued.
Yeah, it's not a liability, we haven't issued it yet, it's the, the rules and regulations promulgated by the Department of Business Regulation, one is not supposed to be able to sit on a license. It really is not that important in Tiverton, where we don't have a limit on the number of licenses, and what we're looking for is diligent progress, so we thought we would have another three months to see a progress report at that point, to see where it is, and keep things moving.
These are non-advertised, right?
It is advertised, because it's a local license, and technically, we, oh, well...
It's under not...
Not, not...
No, no, I'm sorry.
They were advertised back in the summer.
Right, okay, so it's not costing us any money to advertise, okay.
He has two of the businesses in town, one has a local license.
Okay. But you, you think that you'll be ready by the end of June?
I try.
So give him, give him six months or something.
It's a July 28th meeting.
Okay.
He said midsummer, I'm going by his...
Yeah.
July?
Late July?
Okay.
So we'll put it on the July 28th meeting.
Yep.
So we'll extend it through July 28th.
All right, so I move that we, what are we doing? Nothing? Extending the license to, until July 28th. 2014.
Subject to...
Subject to meeting all legal requirements, I mean.
Second.
We have a motion in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, appointments and resignations. Annual Appointment of Administrative Officer, Recommendation on Planning Board, Kate Mieschel. Hi, Kate. I would just, I would, make a motion.
Yeah, without any objections from anybody, it seems, I would happily make the motion that we reappoint Kate Mieschel as Planning Board Administrative Officer. The Planning Board unanimously voted to recommend the reappointment, and I think that's all that needs to be said.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor. Thank you, Kate, for a great job.
Thank you, Kate.
Okay, well, this, this one's going to be a tough one, I'm not sure if we can get this one through. The appointment of Councilor Pelletier is an ex officio to the Ad hoc Land Use Procedures Enforcement, LUPE Committee.
Still moved.
I don't remember that.
You volunteered.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor.
There you go.
There you go.
That's my resignation.
We have resignation of Robert Tullisner as Harbor Master.
Mr. President, members of the council, good evening. I'm Bruce Cox, you're Chairman of your Harbor Commission. Mr. Tullisner's resignation came as a surprise to us, we found out about it, actually after you did, because he submitted his letter directly to you, you being his employer, and he just working with us, it was Wednesday night last week. I know in his letter, he makes a recommendation of a particular person as an interim Harbor Master, and that would be inappropriate, as it wasn't listed at this point in time for that, but I would admonish the council that it do place that item on next, the next agenda. The person recommended is, in fact, a qualified interim Harbor Master. We are, while people say, well, it's not boating season yet, no, it's, you're now starting to work on boats, you're getting all geared up, the boat will be in the water in May, so you don't have that much time in actuality between now and when it's going to really gear up. So I would very much ask that that be on the next agenda, and then I will be in contact with the Secretary about the process of advertising and such for a new Harbor Master, or whether or not the council feels it can go forward with the interim. That being said, we are, in our budget process, as are many people, we'll be meeting with the Budget Review Committee on Thursday night, and ours, in our budget is a requirement, or a quest, rather, of an Assistant Harbor Master, an Assistant to the Harbor Master. Now is probably the most appropriate time for that, to assist, I mean, the candidate is a young Tiverton man, who, given the opportunity, might become a long-term, a long-term Harbor Master, was, but he would, might need assistance in certain aspects of the position, particularly at the beginning. So I would ask that you take that under, you know, careful advisement, and I look forward to seeing what happens for the next agenda.
Okay. I just have one question, a matter of sort of practical operation. Am I mistaken that this is around the time that, that you guys or the Harbor Master sends out bills for invoices?
The bills and invoices actually went out in December.
Oh, okay, and they're due by?
And they are, they're due now.
Right.
There's a discount period for the month of January, they're now on their normal rate period, April 1st, they suffer a, a late fee, if you will, and yes, we've, as of the last Wednesday meeting, we'd receive roughly $14,000 of what is about a $50,000 income stream, 55,000.
So we've still got some work to do.
Oh, yes, then paperwork will be coming in fast and furious, now at the same time that you're getting the boat ready and getting other things ready there, a number of speed buoys that need to be cleaned up and ready and processed and put into the water and that kind of thing, be ready for the season.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Tights?
I, that was my question as well, I was just going to, was concerned if the two weeks were, is going to be a problem, and also I wasn't sure about the, the letter saying he's taking new employment in April, is he still going to be working for the town through March to help us?
You'll have to ask him that, he actually indicated to us he's going to try to be at our April meeting, you know, we meet on the first Monday of the month, but he did not know what his new position in Florida was requiring timewise, I can inquire and inform the Secretary of that, I don't know, is we're in an emergency situation here at this point. That would be the only basis, obviously, that the board could take up, the council could take up this matter at this time.
Well, I'm, I'm going to also suggest that the council not accept the resignation at this time, since it's not clear when it is.
When it is, yeah.
So that if he is in fact staying and, and working over the next couple of weeks, he'll have the authority to carry out his position.
Okay.
To continue until the next meeting.
Yeah, we'll continue this, this to the March 28th meeting, and also put on the agenda further discussion regarding an interim Harbor Master and/or advertising. Thank you.
It's the 24th, right?
Right, it's 24th?
24th.
24th.
24th. Do you have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Mr. Cox.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
Do we need anything from this individual between now and, you got it?
Okay, unfinished business. Town Council Goals and Objectives for Town Administrator, continue to March 24th, and we promise we will get ours in.
Mine's done.
Yeah, I submitted some. Looking for the agenda?
Authorization to advertise.
Where we got announcements?
F2.
Are your revenue projections?
No.
No, transfer from, oh, sorry, advertise.
I'm sorry. You just handed me the revenue projections, so we're doing a transfer from the...
No, no, no.
No, no, no. Authorization to advertise for maintenance, farm, and labor.
Oh, that's continued.
Oh, it's continued, sorry.
That's why you confused me.
So it is the transfer.
Just so everybody understands where we are with this in public, the job descriptions are being rewritten, and we will be sitting down, Mike Osillo and I will be sitting down with the union leadership to review the changes to the job description. I've also asked them to consider closing some of the looseness in the ASME contract, so that this employee, in my proposal would be that it return to the supervision of the Director of Public Works, and no longer report to the Town Administrator, and that the other looseness around hours of work would be tightened up as well. That might be a more difficult conversation, because this individual may be called in from time to time and would still have the benefits of those arrangements. So that meeting will occur, everybody should also recall that under the ASME contract, we must post both of these positions for internal lateral transfers before we go out to a full advertisement. So that's where we are in the process, and I believe our meeting is either late this week or early next week.
Okay. What does that mean exactly, internal lateral, is that any...
If another ASME employee wishes to apply for the position, they have the benefit of, of being able to get it. There would be a process if more than one applied, but in the contract language, the, the minimum threshold is that the individual be qualified to fill a position.
Okay.
So there would be some reference.
So they can bid for the position.
They can bid for it, it'd be referenced to the job description and required skills.
Okay. All right, financial business, now, Town Administrator.
Now we get the transfer. The Fire Chief has requested a transfer of $80,000 from his payroll account, his regular payroll account to his overtime account, in order to cover his anticipated shortfall in the overtime account. It is a recommended action, I think we have discussed, the Chief and I, at some length, that this is not a cycle that would continue, the math is too aggressive, to take straight time and fill the hole in the overtime budget, overtime being compensated more highly, and we are in a very difficult trend, but the Chief's projections of that $80,000 will get us through this, I would refer any more detailed questions to the Chief.
Chief?
The $80,000 coming from base is the salaries that are left from those individuals that we had the vacancies for, so we need to fill that into overtime, so at least we're trying to stop that hole.
Okay, and, and how many vacancies do we have at present?
Presently, there's three, and I'm still waiting for the fourth one, he has not got his start date from his other department yet.
Okay.
We have, Chief Blakely is finishing up, hopes to have him finished within the next couple of days, the background checks for some of the candidates, and hopefully we'll get them moving forward.
Okay, anything else from the council?
So, Chief, how long in theory might this $80,000 cover us through?
I'm hoping it'll get us to the end of May. If the current, if the current trend continues.
Yeah, your burn rate per month is between $45,000 and $55,000 at your current pace.
Right. In overtime?
In overtime.
What was that again?
$45,000 to $50,000.
$45,000 to $50,000?
Mm-hmm. So what happens in June?
I'm going to go back into my budget and see what else I can find.
Well, hopefully, you, this is why it's such a priority to fill these positions, because you will go to two vacation slots per shift after Memorial Day.
We have a benefit this year, there still is one section in the contract that after Memorial Day, they get Memorial Day weekend, but they don't go too many on vacation until July 1st.
July 1st, good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Moda? Revenue projections?
No, we have to make a motion.
Oh, motion on the transfer.
There's, can I just ask a question? There's no other alternative here?
No.
I don't...
You need to bend.
Yeah, I don't.
There's no money for anywhere.
You need to bend.
There's men on Manic.
I have, I have discussed in the past, per diem, looking at per diem employees and other things, it's prohibitive in the contact, in the contract, no other way to get around it.
Yes.
If you don't have the bodies, you have to bring someone in.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I move that we approve a transfer of funds from account 3310-5101 base salary to 3310-5104 overtime in the fire department's budget for the amount of $80,000.
Second.
You have a motion second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, one last question. If we transfer this money now, would we be able to pay any new hires out of this account?
Would there be anything left? That's a good question.
Well, it depends on how quickly they come on board.
Yes, sir. We have left money there for the salaries going forward from this point forward.
Till July?
We've taken that into account.
Through July?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have. We have not taken that. We've only taken what we have not spent up to this point in salaries.
Okay.
And do, I know we've asked this question before. Sorry, chief.
No problem.
The three vacancies and one anticipated timeframe for potentially filling those? I mean, what's the?
Again, Chief Blakely is hoping to have those background checks. They've been cleared on the psychological and their medical clearances. Chief Blakely is hoping to have those to me within the next day or so on the background checks. Once we have that, we'll sit and discuss with those employees, offer them employment. I don't like it when people do it to me, but I would hope that they would give their employers two weeks' notice, and then we would start as soon as we can get them in the door.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm just trying to see how that kind of connects with $80,000 to cover through the end of May, start of the new fiscal year, so on and so forth.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey, Mr. Wojcicki? Revenue projections.
Next item before you is revenue projections for the town. That's item F2. This is another one of those transitional items where I'm coming in at the end here. But I did discuss for the better part of an afternoon with the treasurer the various projections for these revenue items. These are miscellaneous revenue items, not including the levy. That includes, or sums to, just about $9.8 million of revenue for the town. The biggest chunk of that being 5.8 in operations aid through the school funding formula. There are, if you have any questions about the specific items, some of them are very difficult to estimate, as I'm sure you realize. Building permits, et cetera, are subject to the trends. But we worked with all the department heads to get their best estimate with the material they're most familiar with to arrive at these numbers.
I don't know if you, so this is a 1.4% increase over the revenue wise?
Yes.
Any questions from the council?
And the budget committee has received this or will be receiving this?
They will be receiving it because they have to have it by the 8th, but when it's a weekend, they can have it on a Monday. Because the only, I just looked at it all together. I did work on some of the figures with her as far as the clerk's office. But I thought that state funding was for the incentive for meeting the, that's the pension plan for meeting that improvement. Isn't that what that $74,000 is?
That's what the $74,000 is, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was coming this May. If it comes before the end of the fiscal year?
Yeah, then it's in this year.
You cannot count it towards next year's.
Right.
And I think you're right.
I'm not sure, because I didn't speak to Denise. She wasn't in today. And I just, really just looked at it. So I'm not sure. If they worked it out, it's probably not going to come in before.
Yeah, if it doesn't come in before the end of the fiscal year, then it would be revenue for next year. But if it doesn't, it's counted this year.
It's going to count this year. You can't take that in.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure.
I think you're looking retrospectively. In her footnote, F, FY 2014 municipal incentive aid was not included in the FY 2014 revenue budget. So you're playing catch-up for something you already received.
So we're a year behind or?
We're in the 14 year. But that's all right. Whatever she clears it up a little more.
Yeah, just get clarification on that.
Nancy, can I ask you a quick question? When do we, when do we take a look at the fee schedule again? I know we do that annually. It's not coming up?
I spoke to Mr. Cox on it as well, because he had a question with the mooring fees. We do that annually, so we should be doing it by the end of June. We'll have to advertise, and I'll have to send out an email on Mr. Wojcicki and send out an email to his department heads and make sure any requests come in. So we can kind of collate it together.
I think, just to dovetail with that, I have a couple of questions, too. But that's a, we always sort of do this where we look at the revenue and then we say, "Well, what can we do about our fee schedule?" And then we say, "Well, not really a whole lot, because we set the revenue based on our fees." But I really, I know, but I really want our, this exercise to be a little bit more in-depth than it was in years past. I want to understand these fees a lot better than I do. And we got to have a real ironing out of why we have fees for some things, don't have them for others, and what the rates are.
I could always put it on more than one agenda so that you're able to get input from the departments.
Each one, yeah.
Good and clear input on them.
Yeah.
Because I know on some of the inspections and the plan reviews, there was questions by council.
And I would, I would encourage us, when we get there, to try to do a bit of benchmarking with some of our neighboring communities where appropriate. I understand Tiverton is not Portsmouth or Newport or what have you, but I do think it's worthwhile to just kind of benchmark against where we stand and whether we're way below market rate or way over or at the appropriate kind of level there.
Yeah.
And I will show Mr. Wojcicki what we have now, and then he can get to his department heads. And we'll channel it over maybe three meetings so that you get enough input for back and forth.
Yeah, in fact, I think, if it was last year or the year before, we actually did go out and see what the comparisons were on some fees.
Yes, because some are set by the state. Sometimes we're using the maximum, sometimes we're not using the maximum. So we'll have to break it down, and Mr. Wojcicki will.
So I have two further questions. And one is just the tower land rental of $235,000. I don't know what that is.
Yeah, those are your cell phone towers, base stations, everything else.
The giant tower in the Weetam Woods.
Yeah. That you can see if you look in the middle.
Channel 6 tower.
It's an area that needs to be cleaned up. Okay, so it's already on my radar screen that an itemized following of where all the antennas are and what the town is making doesn't exist, to the extent that not even those who rent from the town can readily provide an answer as to where all their towers and facilities are. So we absolutely have to get a handle on that, make sure they're married up with what they think they should be paying.
And the other one is investment income, $20,000. That's sort of just the general account, small amount of interest. None of that investment income for other funds where it's restricted is represented in this, right? That's not a revenue. That's just building the asset base for those particular. A few weeks ago, I asked a question about, I wanted a list of all of the, okay. I will reiterate my request for a list of all of our major assets that are returning investment and what those are and where they're, what they're returning. Remember when we were talking to the Senatorary Commission and they were making a third of a percent versus?
Right. And Denise did start that list. And then we got kind of sidetracked. But she does give, have to give quarterly reports to the council anyway, so I'll make sure she lists all the, has all the assets.
And is the state phase, the state phase-out number, is that the vehicle? Okay, because we still allow a $6,000 exemption?
Yes.
Does that sound right?
Yes, it's six of three.
It's still what it was.
Yeah, we never.
Either 5,500 or six.
It's six.
We may be one of the only towns in Rhode Island that still does that.
Yep. Definitely.
Mr. Robert has that exemption committee that I'm on that we've been working on, so maybe he could also look towards that exemption and.
I mean, I imagine there's, somebody's put a chart together on who's got the exemption and who's not. So, okay.
I know this is a small amount, but I'm just, it's about, almost halfway down the first page, maps mounted, 1,000.
Maps mounted. That's Nancy.
What is that?
Yeah, let's.
What is that, though?
She's mounting maps.
Where is it?
Um, it's maybe 15, 16 down on the first page.
Is that what they pay when they come in to get a plot map?
No, not just a copy of it. This map's mounted. I think that's probably an old term used, because I think that's all our recording on our maps and plans and things like that. That is, that's what that is. That's our recording.
It's really a recording fee.
I think that's an old terminology used in there.
That you were framing.
You know, line maps.
I thought you were selling framed maps.
I know.
And then the, the only other thing, and I don't know if it's accounted for in here, but I know we talked about it as part of the budget, which is the new wide-body printer that.
Platter.
Platter. And I know we've talked about that as a potential revenue source. I didn't know if that was captured. Nothing really stood out for me.
Each department right now has a item for copies, like that copy machine generates 7,000 something. So they will, that will probably just show additional income for next year, and then it'll start, if it really generates revenue, like, say, the clerks, because everybody goes through to make copies there, then they'll have to start separating.
Okay.
Sure, for the first year, they'll just put it under their copies.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
One last question. I'm sorry. Do we know where we are today or as of the end of, what month are we in, March? At the end of February on a revenue basis?
She doesn't have the report because our deadline was too quick for this. But I'm sure on the next meeting, she'll have the February reports. And I can always have her email them, too.
I don't want to bat back.
Okay. Okay, I'll take a motion to accept the revenue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of final municipal for FY 2014 budget.
I'd just like to review a couple of things. I went to, with Steve and I went to the budget committee meeting on Thursday, and there was a couple of kind of housecleaning kind of things that the budget committee was concerned about. But one of them was the maintenance workers. Does that reflect nine or eight maintenance workers?
Steve, were you supposed to?
Page 17.
It was eight, because it says nine.
Yes.
There should be eight. Okay. So that needs to be changed.
Steve, does that include the person that you were requesting, the new mechanic helper?
I didn't think that made it.
And that, we just. So what does that number reflect?
The nine was anticipation of getting the extra mechanic aid or helper.
Right.
I didn't think that made the cut, so.
Before it had eight, and then nine decided.
But it hasn't been deleted yet.
But what I'm asking is that 384, does that reflect eight men or nine men?
Well, last time I knew there was a half in there, but I thought it didn't make the cut, but I'm not sure.
It did. Our cut.
It wasn't.
The half was.
It's through mine.
So then that should reflect eight and a half, then.
Eight and a half, I guess.
Because that's what the budget committee was wondering.
Okay.
But if we could just look into that. Also, it just asked, same thing on page 17, the clothing allowance boots, if we could move that up to the salary account like we do for the fire department and for the police department, where they put equipment or uniforms up to the salary account instead of putting it under operating expenses?
What is that?
The clothing allowance, that usually goes under the salary account.
It's not salary, though.
Yeah, but if you look at the, it's not under operating. If you look at the fire department.
Oh, you're saying not under the line item, but under the heading.
Right, under the headings. And then the other thing was, they were wondering if we could do two separate accounts for the drainage account and the paving program. See how they both have the same account number? And I didn't know the answer to that, and that's why I'm asking. Now, keep in mind, the DPW can carry forward all of, so if that's what you're thinking. I'm sure, because.
They can just put it into paving.
Right. So by separating this, does it make a difference?
Other than accounting, it helps to know how much you're spending on paving.
I thought there was a big hullabaloo the last time we talked about this, about whether or not paving should be separate and.
I think you should decide that going forward. The DPW currently considers anything related to the paving job to be part of the paving account. If they have to hire a surveyor to go out there first to survey what they're going to pay, that's part of paving cost.
What I'm saying, Andy, it is separate on this budget, the drainage and paving.
Right.
But Denise has assigned the same number.
Okay. So if you, if you really want it separate, you should do it, but then you've got to deal with the question that only the paving is exempt from the carry forward.
No, it's not. If you read, somebody showed me the referendum from last year, everything in the DPW account goes in, goes into paving at the end of the year.
But if you create a separate number for drainage?
Right.
There won't be anything in the drainage number. They'll only be in the paving. So they won't be able to go forward.
Drainage, you can't do it.
But you can't go forward into the drainage account anyway, can you?
You can now, because, well, that was the question, because it's part of the, if that's what you want, that's fine. But realize that you're only going to be doing paving with roads that don't require any drainage work.
Well.
Anything like, any of, any of the unimproved roads that are gravel and stuff that require drainage work won't be able to be used with the carryover funds for the paving.
That was just a question they had, and we were supposed to come back with it. I'm just bringing it forward. Is Nancy in that?
Well, I think we have the discussion, and it started with the railings.
Right.
If you recall.
I do.
For guardrails.
I do.
And that, that we thought that everything else other than putting down a road surface should be separate.
And you do have such.
You may end up with 100 items.
Well, my question is.
If you go to breaking it down to that regard, there's a lot of specialty outings outside just surveying, you know, putting in bounds, renting pieces of equipment, paying police, anything I do to work on that road. And if we separate them all out and pigeonhole them all, then there's going to be a lot of these little specialty things, you know, from renting a grader to whatever pops up when we hit that road. There's a lot of things. So if we separate every single item out, we can, I mean, and it'll.
Now, Nancy, right now, line painting and guardrail doesn't have an account number.
Because it's new. If it's approved, the budget's approved, then it should plug the numbers in.
Have a separate number, a separate budget.
That's what I'm asking.
Yep.
Yep. Anything new should wait till the budget goes through, and then it should start plugging the new numbers.
All right. So I saw the $64,000 question is then. Do we want-
To separate.
Drainage, paving, line painting, and guardrail, all under paving?
The same account number?
Yeah.
If it's the same account number, although it's broken out from a budget perspective, if it's the same account number, in theory, I guess, if anything carries over, it can be applied as necessary across anything that shares that same account number, right?
Right. It's just a breakout of the paving account.
What do you think, Nancy?
What is the virtue of that?
It's really kind of semantic. You're not drawing a line between your feet. It is semantic drainage.
No, no.
There is no line being drawn there.
No.
Okay.
It was always called draining and paving, but-
So it should be all the same account number, is what you're saying?
I was of the opinion, and I was of the opinion when we talked about this a couple months ago, that anything that is required to either repair or rebuild or construct from new a road is part of paving, whether it's a curb, whether it's some dirt to fill in a hole, whether it's the base coat, whether it's the stripe, whether it's, whatever it is. And I don't, I'm, I'm not convinced that there's some virtue to separating everything and accounting for it otherwise and restricting it. I just haven't been convinced that that's an important thing to do.
Well, the only, the only thing I say is that because we go out to bid on certain aspects of this, and I think you need to track what you're going out to bid on. So if you're going out for guardrails, as we did, you know, otherwise we just, you know, there are aspects to the paving that, that you go out to bid for that I think we need to track, and I think it's all under one heading, paving. And the paving account goes from, let's say, just to pick a number, 225,000, and because we needed new guardrails and new drainage and new this, new that, it all of a sudden jumps to 500,000. Without us asking for the details, we're not going to know where that came from. You know, I mean, I understand it's all part of, part of the road, but paving, quote-unquote, encompasses all these other things, but-
Exactly.
You know, you still have to show when you get a detail-
Right.
You know, to, to, when you're doing the actual paving.
Exactly.
You have to show the dollars you spent in putting a new guardrail in-
Right.
Or new drainage, you know. So I, again, I mean, I wouldn't mind if they all have the same account number, but I would like to be able to look at it if I see a $500,000 paving thing and see what, what did it actually constitute.
And you do have the control of any contract sizable of $2,500 comes to you for approval anyhow. So if I have to hire a surveyor for over 25, it has to come to you, advertise, come to you for approval and everything, so, over that. So there is control that I'm not going to spend 300,000 on guardrail and 50 bucks on paving, because it's going to, it's going to come to you.
So what is the consensus? We keep it all here?
What's consensus?
I, I would say keep it broken out for now. Maintain the same account number to give us some level of flexibility. See how it goes for the next fiscal year, and if you need to revisit it, do it that way.
Now, tell them that there is a night if they ask, if we discussed it.
Yeah, I'm under the same sort of a consensus that President Orondrick is, is being able to understand how much paving actually costs. Also involves, you know, the details, the renting equipment, the painting lines, whatever have you. Because we have a line for paving, we have line for drainage, we have, that's, that's, that's all long good. It's actually good to know what, how much money we're spending in certain items, but it's also good to know how much paving actually also costs total.
I agree with that.
I would prefer to have the drainage account have a separate number, so that it can be tracked separately.
The only thing I'm going to ask is that if it has a separate number, because I'm not sure if that falls within the resolution.
It does. Yes, it does. I read it, and we had it, it does. We had it the other day.
Maybe you want to have separate numbers and you want to amend the resolution for this year to include the multiple numbers. Would that be?
Well, I think the resolution reads that anything in the DPW account goes into paving at the end of the year.
That's right. But I'm saying, do you want to amend the resolution to say that paving, drainage, guardrails, and so forth may be carried forward?
Yeah.
May be carried forward.
I think that resolution came from the Budget Committee.
It did.
And they can amend their resolution to include that, once they understand, if they want it broken down, then they'll have to amend the resolution to include the different line items that make up paving. So I think they can do that. They're requesting a separate line item. If we're tracking it as a separate line item in the budget here, then you can't get a five-year average on it unless you have a separate account number. So.
Just separate as best you can.
You know, and I, I think it would show us, you know, for example, if we're putting in roads, you know, how many roads actually needed guardrails in town. You know, not every road that goes in has guardrails.
No, very, very few. Yep.
But again, if, if all of a sudden we saw that we budgeted 5,000 and you spent 20-
Right.
Then we have to-
Something's up.
Something's up. And, you know, you could just say, well, these roads had to have guardrails, you know, but otherwise we wouldn't know.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I have no issue with that, if that's the consensus of the council, that we ask the Budget Committee to-
What we'll have to do?
Separate account numbers.
Yeah, separate.
Amend the, amend the resolution.
Please talk to him about the resolution.
But the resolution from the Budget Committee-
Budget Committee.
To incorporate those accounts that directly related to-
We'll talk to them about it this week. Bob's phone's ringing.
As a practical matter, will this require some additional sort of creative accounting when it comes to, you put in a road, some, how do you attribute the cost of renting a bulldozer for the-
No, he's going to estimate as best you can. He's already told you that drainage goes along with the paving. But what I do need by tomorrow, because this has got to be turned into the Budget Committee, I've got to clock this. I want you to please recheck your maintenance workers. I thought that was, it doesn't include the new person, which the council is not-
Well, if you, if you look at the numbers I asked for, and then look at the numbers you approved, there's a drastic, there's a drastic change.
Yeah.
I, I looked at it as you did not approve that, but unless you think differently.
Yeah, I, I, again, I have to look at the old ones.
It's a half a person.
It's a half a person.
I thought it was eight, yeah.
So there was a half.
And the question was whether to go to nine, you know, a full timer.
The most recent budget that we worked on for February 23rd, stamped February 23rd, I don't know what, what came out, was $413,000 for that line item. It's now 384,000?
So I think we gave him half.
The numbers both said nine, so there's something.
All right, but I want to change that tonight, because I have to clock this in. So I think it's eight and a half.
Eight and a half. That's, that's what it was down to. Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure about the half.
So would you just, just review that quickly, review those other numbers?
Yep.
And I'll change it to eight and a half.
All right.
Because you want to give them a clean copy. And I will ask Denise for a new number. That's what you want, right, on the drainage.
Yep.
And then just move the clothing.
And I'll move uniform rentals up.
Which makes sense, because it's there anywhere else.
And that was the end.
Yeah, we talked about other things, but that was it.
Anything else from anyone else in the council? This is our, your last chance.
The only question I would have is, Steve, in the event that drainage is its own separate account, it is restricted to only drainage expenditures, is $50,000 we've allocated for that sort of pro-rata share, is that sufficient to do your drainage work?
I would think so. In, in most cases, which we use a little bit of the drainage money to do a little more paving, and, but there's a lot of drainage to be done. So it, it should be adequate. And if not, I'll just, like we're shuffling now, transferring, you know?
There was just another thing, just as a heads up for the council. There was a great big discussion about the utility truck versus the tracks for the dozer.
Right.
And it seemed like the consensus of the Budget Committee was, they would support the utility truck more than the tracks, right, Steve? And they were trying to think of a way to do the tracks and payments. So I'm not, I'm just giving you the heads up that that might be something that they present to us.
Yeah, they, they suggested, you know, not changing the bottom line, but approving a $25,000 amount to purchase a second-hand utility truck-
Right.
And keeping $30,000 in the dozer track repair for this fiscal year, and supplementing with $30,000 next fiscal year.
Next fiscal, you do one, two.
And hoping everything works out.
So that might be simple.
So without changing the bottom line, that, that was their recommendation.
The only, the only other question I have, I apologize, because I wasn't at the last workshop, was where we landed on the recreation items.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's something we had to-
So as opposed to the, the resurface capital, resurfacing of Town Farm Lower Soccer Field was in the, the capital plan there, and then we had some field rehab line items in the budget.
Yeah. We also, I think, I wanted to also clarify as to whether or not we shortchanged their payroll number, or-
Yes, that's, that's, I think-
Near the director line, wasn't it?
Right.
No, yeah.
Not many recreation coordinator.
We were under the assumption that they had double counted-
That that was part of-
Or we had double counted for a coordinator, because they hadn't spent, like last page, summer recreation, let's see.
It was directors and counselors.
Yeah, where is that?
On page twenty.
Twenty, last page.
Why don't I see that? Oh, here we are. Directors and counselors. We'd reduce it to 18,000.
Right, because we, we, we assume, quote-unquote, that it was already built into the beach salaries.
Beach sal-, no, we had assumed it, it was double counted with a recreation coordinator at the bottom, the last line item of 85 to 50. And then, because directors and counselors had historically spent 15 or 16,000 dollars a year, and now all of a sudden one was requesting 23 and a half, we didn't really understand why. Because we gave them 23 and a half last year, and they only spent 16,000.
And that was because?
I don't know why.
What's your name?
No, no, that, that line item of recreation coordinator was always here as 8,500, give or take.
But I, but he still didn't explain why.
He didn't know why at the time. But days later, we got an email with an explanation, and I don't, I could not surmise what the explanation was, whether or not he needed it or not.
Yeah, it wasn't clear. He just said it wasn't enough. But it wasn't clear why, you know, you requested 23, and you'd only spent 17 or 18.
I think 18 is probably going to be fine, but that's my own dissent.
Director and councilors.
And so where did we land with the, the field maintenance?
So the, the sort of gist of it was, they're going to reseed or resaw the field. The additional money that they've requested, and I think it was field rehab, they were essentially earmarking for brush clearing and planting grass in areas that are encroaching on fields, especially down at the lower soccer field, between the soccer field and the first Little League field. And then also, the one on, is it East Road? What do they call that, East Field?
South Field.
South Field, whatever it's called.
On East Road, behind the first.
Mosquito Heaven. The Little League field there, the, I guess the outfield is getting pretty well overgrown, so they're going to try and trim that back and plant grass so that they can just mow it and not have to worry about spending a whole boatload of money to cut back brush every year and take, take trees out and stuff.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I think we just-
Oh, I'm sorry. And the other, the fertilizer seed, lime, sand, and stone, half of that, the sand and stone, or two fifths of that, is for the beach. It's sand and rock to replace, to replenish the beach, less than it is for fields and things. And so I don't think they actually, the fertilizer seed and lime, it's not really, I don't think, that's a contractual thing we have with McGeeo, but I'm kind of blanking out as to whether or not that was included. I, I think we asked for clarification on that, because there was an additional service up to a certain amount of money, and I don't know if that was inclusive of the personal mowing services, personnel mowing services.
No, that 25.
No, that was addition.
It was 25.
It's an addition to the 25.
It's an addition, so.
For added services. That's just a strictly contract for mowing, for 25.
So there's, there's, clarity is not exactly the word to represent the situation. But I think Gary said he was going to try and break out some of these a little bit more thoroughly for his Budget Committee's submission.
He's not usually the one that does all this, and I think he's just lacking some help right now, but he did say he'd try to break down more.
Any other discussions? Okay, I want to take a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the final municipal budget for FY 14-15, including the administrative kind of housekeeping changes that was previously discussed.
Any further discussion?
The administrative changes were just the drainage account getting its new own number, maintenance workers changed to eight and a half, and then putting the boots in-
Up on the salaries.
Under salaries.
That's just all the business.
Just don't like the drainage thing, but otherwise, I think it's a good budget.
Okay. Anything else? Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Opposed.
I'm sorry, I didn't get who seconded that motion.
Denise did.
Okay, under new business, Street Committee, discussion on clarification missions for Street Committee. Hi.
My name is, uh, whoever doesn't know me. I'm here tonight because I need some clarification. I long to get myself through this Street Committee, and-
And thank you for that.
Didn't know what I was getting myself into, but I'm not a quitter. But I need some clarification as to what my job is. I cannot go week to week being told different, different things. One week, Mr. Bullock said that we needed to do this, the next week it's different. I can't work like that. I need consistency. I need to know what you as a council want me to do. I do understand that Mr. Teigs drafted up that resolution for the Advisory Committee, but you were at our last meeting. It was very frustrating. One minute we're being told we can't do private property, the next minute we're being told it's okay because it's in the town's best interest. I believe the particular street we're talking about, it's in our best interest to do it. I don't want anybody to get me wrong in that. But if we're going to continue to do it, I don't believe that it should remain private property. I think we all sat here a couple months ago, and we discussed Cynthia Avenue, and Mr. Bullock continuously said, I cannot be on private property. You as council can correct me if I'm wrong, but the first street we're discussing, part of it is accepted. The remainder is clearly private on the map. Okay? So as a Street Committee member, my feeling would be, we either need to move to accept that road, because it is in the best interest of the town, because it's a turnaround at the bottom, or we have, if it remains private property, are we okay to continue to grade it twice a year as we do now, plow it, sand it, trash pickup? It seems to me like sometimes we have to follow the charter, and other times we don't have to. And sometimes we're following ordinances, and sometimes we don't have to. I need like a platform to go on, or some consistency. I want to do a good job at this, but it's been frustrating so far. So I'm, I need to be of your help.
Okay.
I think part of the issue is that Cynthia Avenue has been an exception, because that was a health and safety issue. You know, that was one of the reasons.
And I'm not even discussing it.
But I think, and the council can, can weigh in, but I think our, my idea with the Street Advisory Committee was to look into those roads that are not accepted town roads, and to see what the status of those roads are, you know, and whether or not they should be accepted, you know, by, you know, recommendations saying, okay, this road, if it was to be accepted, needs a base, needs to be totally, you know, whatever, and then this road is, just needs a top coat, this road needs, you know, whatever. And also finding out from the residents of those particular roads, whether or not they do want to become an accepted, you know, town road or not. That, that was my understanding, that it is an Advisory Committee to look at and make recommendations, saying, these are the roads that, that need work. Should they be part of the town roads or not? That, that was my understanding of it.
Do, do we?
I was going to say that I have absolutely no idea at all why I took an interest in unacceptable roads. It has to do with my street. But it is interesting to note that the purpose of your Street Committee is very limited. And I'll read this for, for the benefit of people who just may be listening and may not have the resolution in front of them. But your purpose is limited to the following. The purpose of the committee shall be to advise the Department of Public Works and the Town Council as to the status and classification of all streets in the town, and provide such recommendations as the committee deems are reasonable and appropriate to fairly deliver, commence, and terminate town services to the appropriate streets. It's also a little vague. I've already indicated on the Town Council that I believe that this whole issue of unacceptable streets and tithin is something that we're going to have to address at some point. These streets have been with us for decades, and they're going to be with us for decades to come. Interestingly enough, despite Mrs. Mellow, my limited abilities with the computer that you often comment about, I was able to Google up unacceptable roads. And it's absolutely amazing, the number of communities that have a similar problem to this. So I don't take credit for any authorship. I mean, there are, there are articles and articles about unacceptable roads, particularly in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. And what I did was, I tried to put together- And what I did was I tried to put together what I thought were the best possible plans for unacceptable streets, put a summary together of that in one page. But I also asked Mr. Belucci, who was most helpful, in putting together some real background information on these unacceptable streets. For example, we keep hearing that there are, I believe the number is 163 unacceptable streets. As I told Mr. Belucci, we're not going to get 163 streets being dumped on the town. My portion of the street is unacceptable. I don't care if you take it, it means nothing to me. I believe Mr. Roderick is living on an unacceptable street. I don't think he really cares. But what I did ask Mr. Belucci was, can you reasonably identify for us in the report? And Mr. Belucci has done an outstanding job. He's put together three reports for me. But they do identify with his report of February 7th, 2014, what I was really looking for and trying to get to eventually. And that is reasonably how many streets are out there that represent a real risk to this town? That is, how many streets do you have residents and abudders who are really interested in turning the street over for maintenance, turning them into accepted streets? And roughly what is the cost for assuming all of that responsibility? I don't want to misquote the last report that Mr. Belucci gave me, but I think his estimate was something in the range of, there are probably about 25 streets in this, in this town that reasonably we could anticipate as a town council, people would want to turn over. And I think he put the cost of that at something in the range of $800,000 to $900,000. As I say, what I, what I hope is that the, your street committee. You wouldn't have that.
And he put together for us was 800 and some thousand for already accepted roads that need work. And then 19 other ones for 385,000.
And one reason I'm not distributing the reports is that Steve gave me his most recent report tonight. And I said, Steve, give me all of your reports. You and I are going to meet sometime next week. I want to make sure I have all of the reports and I'm going to distribute them all at the same time. But my thought is, at least at this point, is to expand the purpose of the street committee. And finally begin in tithin to address this whole issue of the unacceptable streets. And with no pride of authorship at all, I'm looking at a resolution that was passed in one town recently that expands the responsibility as follows, and I'll just read it. And I had to change a couple of words to make it appropriate. But it indicates, and I'm quoting, "The purpose of the street committee will include, colon, to review the unacceptable roads in the town and recommend a policy for addressing these roads that is fair, consistent, clear and affordable. Specifically, propose a flexible street betterment program to assist residents in getting their accepted street accepted. Propose a funding mechanism for the financial obligation for those roads which may become accepted. Document the process for residents to have their road accepted in a manner that is clear and concise. Recommend how to communicate to the residents the results of any proposal by the street committee or final plan by the town council." And that's what I'm tonight going to present as a, as a motion for broadening your authority. I might say at this point that using the same method of Googling various proposals in other towns, as I say, I have put together what I call a quote unquote, possible plan for unacceptable streets. And it tries to outline what I thought were the best suggestions in different communities in Massachusetts for trying to tackle this problem, including financing the whole issue. That's my thought before moving on any resolution or proposal. I welcome anybody else's comments on this and whether it's the same thinking. That is, it's time to move on these unacceptable streets and get something done.
Mr. Lambert, I would, I would support broadening the kind of authority and scope for the street committee to make sure that they're empowered to kind of get done what they need to get done. I want to be able to answer your particular question though. And so as far, and I don't know if we have these numbers, but as far as unacceptable roads are concerned, do we know which percentage are private versus public? And should we give guidance to the street committee in terms of prioritizing one over the other?
Well, this is where my question came in the other night, okay? We're working on a street that the top portion is accepted, okay? The bottom portion is clearly private. It's clearly labeled private. But the road, the private area is a turnaround for the DPW, okay? The DPW currently grades it twice a year, sands it, plows it, does trash pickup, does everything. But it is clearly private. And now I spent hours doing research on these roads, looking at people's views, looking through maps. Then I get to the meeting and we say, we can just leave it the way it is and continue start grading it, following it, sand it, and giving them trash pickup even though it's private because it's in the best interest of the town to do that. Now, that's where my, why am I spending hours doing research? If we can just leave it alone and continue to do it the way it is and we do some private, you know, is it okay to say, we're going to do your private property? But now we get to another private property and we say, well, it's, no, we're not going to do that private property. My suggestion was we move to accept that road if it's in the best interest of the town to take care of it. But I was shot down, said the residents are, this is what the residents, the residents are happy, leave it alone. Why am I doing research? So this is.
Ultimately, the commission or the committee is tasked with presenting recommendations to both the Department of Public Works and the town council. And by virtue of the makeup of the organization, there are board members or there are members of the committee and then there are ex officio members. And the members of the committee are tasked with executing the duties and providing recommendations to the town council. And I would suggest that, you know, I don't know what the circumstances are, but that that's your duty and that's your charge. And so no one should prevent you from exercising that. And if, you know, I'm not sure, I haven't been to the meeting. So I mean, it's as easy as a motion and a second and a vote to get an item sent up this way.
It's not as easy as you think.
Who's the chairman? It's Mike Omen.
That's mine.
There's Mike.
But again, only the members vote, the ex officio.
The ex officio members are there by virtue of their professional affiliation with, with the town and with the item being addressed.
So there's a problem, obviously, because it's your.
So I say to you, and you as chair, that the voting members can vote to send a recommendation.
To us.
To the council.
Is it right for us to recommend that we maintain repairing a private road?
That is your recommendation. That's not necessarily.
It's all right for us to recommend.
That is your charge, is to go through these roads. That is your charge as a street advisory committee, is to look at these roads and say, we think it should be, and these are the steps we need to take.
Try to instill the town.
If that is your recommendation.
If that's your recommendation, no, that's not necessarily true. Yeah, so your recommendations can be, I think.
You'll be accepted.
You know, pretty much you provide supporting evidence as to the conclusions that you've drawn. And whether that is, here is a piece of road that is in question. Our recommendation, after studying and analyzing, looking at all the documentation which we've attached, is to either accept it or not accept it, or whatever the, whatever the item in question is. And then it's our job to sort of sift through that. Can I not kind of?
Just to speak to your earlier analogy, Cynthia Avenue, Cynthia Avenue is not a private road. So let me make that clear first. So you're.
And Cynthia Road Avenue, to the earlier conversation, has never been graded. Just so we all are on the same page. It has been filled and the load of backup stuff, but it was never graded. You know, there are other roads. I go to continuous meetings and Cynthia Avenue always seems to be called, I'm past Cynthia Avenue. I signed up to do this.
Well, yeah, there's more than one. Your analogy is like, here's a road that's not private. And we're ready to actually eliminate services.
Right.
And here's where it is private. And we're going to give services. So it makes no sense to me.
In that night, as we sat here and we discussed Cynthia Avenue, I'm sure you remember it being said that we, I don't go on private property. I can't maintain private property. But now we're in a situation where we're, we do maintain, we do this road twice a year. We grade it. So I'm confused as to what, and then when you go and we're being told that it can just stay the way it is.
Well, yeah, I can see how that happens.
Why did I spend hours to find out if it was private, if it was public, if it was accepted?
Yeah, but again, your charge is to make a recommendation based on the information.
But when your ex officio numbers are there and saying, just move forward, these people are happy with what they want, it's really hard for the people on the road.
As I just told your chair, you are the guys that vote. The ex officios do not vote.
It's what you want to do.
Okay. And we can, even though the charter says we cannot go on, we can't maintain private property because that was given to us our first meeting, we can still maintain.
You, you have.
I was questioning that.
All you're doing is making recommendations. You're not saying you're going to maintain it.
No, I'm not saying we're going to, but we can recommend to maintain private property.
Can we?
May I?
I think we have another issue besides what, you know.
Yeah. Right. First of all, I have to say, you've got the difficult thing. This is this committee that's been going on and off for maybe 20 years? At least 20 years. And all the easy ones were done. And we're down to the difficult ones that don't fit into an easy category. And I think what the council is saying is, yes, we want you to look at it. You're this independent body of citizens. Look at it and give us your recommendation. Let the council, and they're going to turn to me. If it's like, if it's a private piece of property and your recommendation is that we should still continue to maintain it, then that's a secondary issue we'll have to deal with. We have an agreement, work out an agreement with the property owners. Perhaps we take it as a highway by user. If there's a piece of road that's half private and half public, perhaps we should be abandoning the public portion. Let, let the council deal with the issue of how to get there. But you make the recommendation, it's in the best interest of the town as a whole, including the residents on those streets, what you think we should do. And then we can figure out the legal ways to do it if it can be done. Or if not, we won't. But at least let's have your recommendation as to what's the best way to do it.
Okay. And on the unacceptable roads, I had asked, if we, I want to cover all my bases while I'm making good decisions, educated decisions when I go to these meetings. If they're unacceptable town roads, they're not private, the unacceptable, does the town still, is there a liability to the town for those roads? Say somebody got hurt on one of those roads. Is that the liability on the town for that property?
Not necessarily, no. Not if it wasn't accepted.
So where would the liability fall?
The liability would fall on the, on the homeowners.
That's, that's not true because I've contacted numerous insurance companies and they state otherwise because the property belongs to the town and our deed does not cover us to the center of the road. On numerous, on a private property, yes, it covers you to the center of the street. But on a road that's not.
That's a public way, basically?
It's a public way.
Well, I beg to differ. Most of these ones are not ones where the planning board, where there's been a deed to the town of the road. Where those cases were done with the planning board, usually those are the ones that were improved. Most of these predate those. So there's a plat filed and people are selling with reference to that plat. And yes, you do in fact own the fee underneath the road. That's why if the town abandons it, the people on either side are going to get the land because they own the fee interest under the surface of the road. It's subject to the right of the public to travel over it. But it is owned by the people underneath it. Unless it was one of the later ones where there's been a specific deed of streets to the town from the developer. And I said in most of those cases, because it was done through the planning board, we've got the, those are the ones that are not in those conditions because they were prepared before they were done, before they were deeded. So I mean, those are the concerns. That's what we're looking for. If you, I don't think you should worry about the technical legal liability. Look at what's in the best interest overall of the town.
I'm just trying to set up a picture of things so I can make an educated decision. I'm not looking at the legal. I want to make an educated decision. And I'm not going to go to another meeting and try to be made a fool of, sit in front of people. It's not going to happen. That's why I'm here tonight to try and get some advice from the council.
Yeah, your chair runs the meeting and the voting members are the only ones who can vote. You can listen for information from the ex officios. But you vote to make the recommendations to the council.
More or less like this meeting.
I think what we've heard so far really suggests the reason for finally tackling this, this real problem. I don't think, after listening to what we've just heard, there can't be any question in anybody's mind that based on a recommendation that may be made by the street committee, Cynthia Avenue will be a problem five years from now.
I don't care. Honestly, I'm not caring about Cynthia Avenue. I don't care about Cynthia Avenue. I'm talking, we're on our own spot right now.
No, no, I understand. I understand. I'm just suggesting, and this is not meant as a criticism. I'm simply suggesting at some point, I would like to see the, the purpose of your street committee broadened somewhat so it can address what the real issue is. And that is finally tackling these unacceptable streets that are going to be. We've just heard, well, they've been here for 20 or 30 years. Well, they're going to be here for another 20 or 30 years if we don't finally do something.
But again.
And come up with, and it isn't as though, you know, as I say earlier, this is an issue I'm surprised to find, that we find in a lot of communities. In particular, it seems Western Massachusetts, where they have all sorts of programs that they've been trying to put together to solve this problem of the unacceptable streets. That's what I'd like to see is for the street committee to broaden its purpose so that you can look into the possibility of coming up with a plan that'll let us, let us, as a town council and as a town, finally accept these streets or at least give the residents and the abudders a program that'll make it clear to them how they go about becoming an accepted street and getting services from the town. That's all I'm looking for.
Right. And yeah, sure. I think the charge to them is to make recommendations. I think it's up to the council to devise a plan on how to accept these streets, what the requirements are going to be.
I think that's what they're looking for, yes.
So I don't think that is, I don't think that's their charge.
Oh, no, no, no.
I think theirs to look at the streets and say, we've got X amount of streets that are either unacceptable or private and whatever they are, and say, okay, we think they should be accepted or not accepted and so forth. That list comes to the council, then we have to make that determination as to what the way to get them, if we're going to accept them, how it's going to be done, how it's going to be funded. If roads are completely not up to standards, who is going to pay for that? How it's going to be done? So those are things I think that should be, the council's wary, not yours.
Right. And I totally agree with that. But I wanted to know, as far as, you know, our first meeting we went to, we were told, we were given a copy of the charter and said that if it wasn't an accepted road, that we needed to recommend to the council to either accept that road or not accept it. And if we did not accept it, the services would cease. That's what our first meeting. When we went to the second meeting and we had all these people in front of us, the story changed. So that's why I'm asking, it's fine to, for us to recommend something to be private property and we can recommend it stay private.
Again, it's a recommendation. The council has to make that decision.
Yes.
But it's also a recommender in that way.
Yes.
It's okay to just consider having the town still maintain it to some extent, even though it is a private road.
If that's your recommendation. And then let it be up to us.
We need to know whether we can do that.
Can I just ask a procedural question? Is the intent to go through all of the streets and bring everything back to the council in one?
in one fell swoop? Or, no, no, no. Okay, then that's good because what I was going to get to is, maybe after we get through one, two, three streets, right?
We'll kind of work out the kinks here a little bit. You know, it's still all kind of feeling fairly new and we're trying to work through the process. And as we bring particular streets before, as you bring recommendation for particular streets to the council, and we have an opportunity to discuss and debate that, I think just by way of that process, more clarity will kind of be brought to this.
What they want from us in actually in the long run.
We'll kind of fine tune things a little bit, you know?
I understand.
When is your next meeting?
The 19th.
I would also just make you aware, if you're not already aware, that in the event that you have any sort of interpretive questions about the enabling resolution or any other sort of operational questions, these two gentlemen here are sort of at your disposal. The town solicitor is your solicitor as much as he is ours, and the administrator has kind of a broad oversight of, while not directly responsible for the streets committee, you know, he's got the kind of pulse on...
He wasn't here.
Yeah, well, certainly. But I mean, he's...
We're still going to blame him though.
So...
I'm on it. I'm going to tell you something. This whole conversation is very strange to me because I haven't heard the one thing that I want to hear as an analyst. What are the criteria by which you decide the utility of the streets and bring forth a recommendation to the council based upon your objective rating of each way as a necessary public way or not, for public safety or other reasons? And let the council and the administration worry about how much each different type of street would cost to fix, but I'm used to seeing these processes in the private sector where we take all of these things, we find objective criteria, we rank them all, and you know what? You have to live with the results of that. You may end up with a whopper of a project being number one on the list because it has the greatest possible utility for people. It allows them to cross town, allows a fire truck to cross town, but it's going to be very expensive to do versus frankly, the little street you're talking about, which I drove it the other day a couple times and I understand why people would want to see it improved, but I can count on the fingers of one hand how many properties it would benefit versus, and I have nothing else to judge by. So perhaps when I go to the first meeting, I'll flesh that, those sets of concepts out a little bit more. But I just feel like the cart is a little bit before the horse on this. If you're already talking about a specific street or two, and you're already at the point where you want to make a recommendation about a street or two, it's a little premature.
We have no platform, my promise, like, we have no platform to go by. There should be some sort of, to me, if you're looking at, I mean, our 160 streets, you would think that we'd have some sort of platform to go by and not just pick and choose.
The voting members, you have no guidelines, basically.
If you walked into somebody's shed and there were 160 tools, which one would you pick? You'd pick the one that would be most useful to you. So I would say, at this point in this conversation, let's look forward to the 19th and maybe take a step back and figure out how it's all going to work together.
I would also just suggest that we are, I don't even know if we're quite there yet to implement a criteria or a standard. We have, I think, that would be ideal if we had established already this list of 163 streets and their legal status and their ownership status. And already, part of that exercise is going through these and one at a time figuring out, where did this thing come from? Who does it belong to? Is there any documentation or evidence that supports the fact that this is a public way, a private way, a private street, a public, private property? If there's services, if there aren't services? I mean, all that is mind-numbingly, you know...
And have we operationally defined all of those things so everyone's on the same page? You know what I mean? Maybe that gets at your point. I don't know.
I think that's...
I think it speaks volumes of the fact that this has started and stopped how many times, twice or three times in the time that I've been on the council, and I've only been here for less than four years. And so, I mean, it's a tough process and I don't think anybody quite has the methodology on paper to sort of get through it.
And that's maybe the, while we're all eager to kind of start chipping away at this stuff, it probably behooves us, probably a little bit of short-term pain, long-term gain, to kind of just operationally define things, set a methodology, clear up, you know, primary legal status or, you know what I mean? These are all precursor steps before you start to say, "Okay, we're going to look at this street, we're going to make a recommendation." We all gotta, you gotta have the same playbook. You know what I mean?
I'll just make one further comment. I think the town administrator's comments are well taken. That is, you have a criteria. But think of this, we'll just take the one example that we've been talking about, Cynthia Avenue. We come up with the criteria, everyone agrees on the criteria, and we decide, "No, this is not one of those streets that we're going to take in." So for five years, 10 years, the next 20 years, the next 30 years, every once in a while, we send out the DPW to fix up the street, spend another $2,000 or $3,000 last month, $2,000 or $3,000 this month. Come springtime, we'll spend another $2,000 or $3,000. Then we then multiply that over 20, 25, 30, 40 streets. It's good to have the criteria, but we're still stuck with the unacceptable streets that don't meet this criteria and we'll have Cynthia Avenues from now to whenever. That's the issue I'm saying we have to finally address. What are we going to do as a town with these streets?
You're going to have this problem 20 years from now because the underlying, to my understanding, the underlying problem isn't fixed where there's still road, houses being built and roads going in and the roads aren't being accepted. So if the underlying problem isn't fixed, we're chasing a tail. We're going to have 160 roads now that we're chasing, but in 10 years from now, we're going to have another 160 roads because the underlying problem is still there.
I'm not sure that's specifically true. I think ultimately now, if you...
And it's true.
You can put in a development and they can still make the roads private, but then don't have any method to maintain those private roads. So it is possible...
No, I would agree with that, but that's a private road.
Right, but 20 years from now, they're going to say, "Yeah, but you've been plowing and sanding it, you've been picking up my trash, so it should be a public road." And the public travels the road. So it's, Audrey is correct. It doesn't just go away and it's just these 163. It ends up continuing. Another 20 years from now, we'll have another set of roads that we'll have to deal with.
So perhaps there's a secondary set of recommendations that need to come, or maybe there's another venue, but you know, this is putting Band-Aids on stuff. How do we kind of draw a line in the sand and make sure that, you know, from a planning zone, whatever that is, that we are kind of addressing these things proactively as new developments come to town?
The ordinances allow that to happen. So, you know, if the underlying issue is an ordinance needs to be changed, then we should address that. That's a policy issue. But I just want you all to know and realize that this has been going on for 20 years. All the accepted roads that have been identified are on that list and they're not an issue. What's left are the unacceptable roads that we can't find documentation that says that they're accepted. And we have, the purpose of the street committee is to determine the status of that street. So it is to basically classify that street and what to do with it. Some of those unacceptable streets, because some of those unacceptable streets are gravel, some of them are paved. They're not paved to an accepted street standard, so what do you do with them? So that's the issue. And I think part of that is, I think, to have an understanding of the different types of roads, you know, like we're all bantering around, unacceptable, accepted. I think if you had a clear definition of what that means, like Mr. Tights has indicated abandonment of the road and it goes back to the residents or the property owners, is it a private road? I think there's a lot of definitions out there for roads and I Googled a lot of this stuff and to get a better understanding of it. Maybe that's what we need from the solicitor is maybe a lot of definition around what types of streets there are, what types of roads, other than, we know what an accepted road is. An accepted road is, it meets, it met a standard at whatever particular point in time that that road was built and presented to the town council for acceptance. And the town council said, "Yes, it meets the standards of that time and we accept that road." The rest of it is, they're private, they're used by public, they're public way. Some of the roads are not even where they should be. So there's a lot of issues and I think you're going to have, this is the exception list that they're working on. This 163 is really an exception list. These are the ones that don't fall into that accepted category and would never be accepted because they don't meet the standard. If they were to come to the council today to be accepted, they would not be accepted because they don't meet the standard as documented in the ordinance, in the town ordinance. So I think, to start with, we need some definitions behind, and maybe Mr. Tights can help us out with that, to get some definition about roads and all the different flavors, and I'm sure that there's quite a few. And use that as a basis, as well as, I know your team is, your committee, there's a lot of roads, some are paved, not to standard, what should we do with those? If they're gravel, what should we do with those? I think you've got to categorize the roads. Are they halfway paved? Some of it's public, some of it's private, some of it's paved, some of it's gravel. Get that list, categorize them that way, and then also take into consideration street definitions, road definitions that Mr. Tights provides. But I think we need more input from him to give more guidance because it is a difficult task and it's going to be frustrating. I know. It's frustrating.
It is. And like, I'm trying to, you know, you read the ordinance of the town and it says, "A road that's not accepted will not have trash pickup, it will not have..." So in order to make a proper recommendation to you, I'm trying to look at everything and make that correct decision. And that's why I was looking for help.
Well, thank you for coming and having a discussion about this. It brings a lot of things to life.
I mean, it's a beginning. You know, it's a beginning. But again, just remember that you voting members are the ones who make the recommendations, you know? But again, obviously, this has gone on for more than 20 years and every one of these streets is unique in its own way. And that's where the issue lies. When you look at these streets, there are very few of them that are similar. They all have something, whether they're narrow or wide, paved, not paved, actually sited at the back of someone's garage. You know, I mean, there are all these things that you have to take into consideration when you look at these streets.
Now, do we make a recommendation to you as, okay, this is not, we recommend you accept this road as a non-conforming street? Like, it doesn't meet the standards, but we would recommend it would be in the best, town's best interest to accept it?
Yes, you can make any recommendation you want. Again, the council is going to have to make the decision on whether or not they're going to do that.
Just make sure you substantiate your recommendation with all that.
Yeah, I was the work. We'll definitely...
There you go. All right. Do you guys feel as if you have some clarity?
Yeah.
And the town administrator will be at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, as Chair, do you have any other questions that come off the top of your head?
Well, I just want things to be clear, as does everyone else on the committee, as far as what we're striving for, you know what I'm saying? Our goal as far as what we can do, like, can we, like she said, can we say, "Well, we think that you should still maintain even a private way?"
Yeah.
Even if it's by, like, say, Sordi Pan, should we be able to say, "Well, we feel you should still grade it twice a year?" To that, you know, apply with? Or do we have to say, "Hey, it's not a town-accepted road, we wipe everything out," kind of deal? You know what I'm saying?
I mean, you have to make a determination as to whether or not you feel, with the evidence you have, that this should be an accepted road or not.
Yeah, but we can make that recommendation, I'm saying.
Yes.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You are the advisory committee. You can make any recommendations you want in any format.
But I wouldn't get too lost in the minutia of the granular kind of micro that we should think you should pick up trash every other week but pave one, or grade once. I mean, just, that might bog you down, at least for the first, the first few. It's going to be a little bit of a grope to get through the first couple. We'll have a conversation with you at that point, I think.
Can I just make one comment, Mr. President? I was at that meeting, their first meeting. And I just want to say that you have to be careful because what happens is, when the street committee meets, what we always meant for was for them to bring any kind of documentation so that we could do exactly as the establishing resolution says. Determine the status of the street. Is it accepted? Is it unacceptable? Is it gravel? Is it this? Is it that? That's what our mission on this establishing resolution is. When you bring people from a street in, it's really a sensitive issue. And sitting at that meeting, and I think they're right to come and get clarification because I am somewhat confused and I was confused that night. If you have that street here and you inform them as a street committee that, okay, as was headed that way that night, okay, we'll send you letters when we're going to make our vote to whether or not we should be recommending accept it. You have to be careful because when that hits the council, you may not be able to accept it anyway. So you're leading these people down a path, and I'm just saying, that's why she was looking for clarity. I agree you should get clarity.
But on our first meeting, that you were not there, we were told that...
I'm just saying what I was there for, Audrey.
Right, but that's why we were saying that those people were going to be notified. When we were going to, when we came down, right, when we were deciding what we were going to recommend to the council, we were told that, by Mr. Belucci, that certified mail would go out to these people. That's why we sent out today.
And quite frankly, I don't understand where that was going and so I said, "Wait, wait." And I was just trying to clarify, but I think you have to be very careful. What you're saying to them is, yes, you can vote to do that, and then you're going to have these people twice in front of you upset.
But you're not notifying them.
No, no, no. We didn't say we were notifying. We were telling them that we would notify them when we came up with a decision on what we were going to recommend to the council.
No, you know, your charge is to put your request or recommendation to the council.
And we'll notify.
We will then because...
But that's my own saying. Because what they were told at our first, and then the second meeting, it was different.
Yeah, no, no. You don't notify them individually because when the decision is made, it's made by the council. So any discussion or not, they would have to come before the council and not before the advisory committee.
Did we notify them in the past on the...
We notified the certified when we are changing services.
So was Sordi Pan, so was Western Merlot? So there's no consistency again.
That was, that was, that was a notice to change service.
Yeah, that was a notice to change, that came to the council.
No. No.
But it was copied in our package.
What one?
The notice for...
For canceling plowing on the street.
The only time we sent certified mailing out was through the DPW and it was when we were changing services to the street to inform them that we will stop services in, you know, three months or something like that.
We also received it to come to the street committee meeting.
Certified?
Yes, we did.
I don't know, street committee has no budget. I don't know who sent that. I don't know, but...
It's the other night after you...
Yeah, well, you may have, but not through our committee.
He's writing back.
We always notified the abutters at the very first meeting because we wanted to bring any information they had to prove that the road was theirs or not theirs, to gather testimony on any verbal evidence that they knew about. So we always notified the abutters from the DPW that there was going to be a meeting held because I was the chairman of the street committee and to come forward with any information they had. So they were invited to bring, it was a public meeting and they were invited to the public meeting explicitly because they lived on the street.
I think because now Steve is not the Chair of the committee and it's ex officio and we have to figure out a new path for a protocol of notification. If we're going to do that, we have to do it. We have to figure out a way to do it and obviously...
They would post their agenda.
Which I did.
Yes, you post your agenda and say, "These are the two, three, four streets we're going to be discussing."
I must have misjudged them. Yeah, yeah.
Because again, I don't think it's your job to notify them at this point, because again...
That's why we were told at our first meeting. Now, when you go to your first meeting, and I'm sure some of you who are new, you know, a lot of you have been here, but when you were first new, when you went to your first meeting, you relied on that ex officio member to give you the red light.
Oh, no, they threw us to the wolves.
So, but I would agree, like, I think the notification should come from the council when it is being discussed, at the council level.
Your agenda would, in my opinion, if Mr. Tice was here, I'm sure he would agree.
I think that, I think that makes it slightly more clear, because you, we want, we want you folks to do...
An objective.
An objective job, and then, when it gets to the council, we'll have your information, we'll have residents' information, we'll have testimony from whoever wants to shout at us. And it's our job ultimately to decipher all of those bits, and come to a conclusion and a decision. So I think, I think that probably works a little cleaner, but, you know, certainly Matt can take a swipe at it.
Is that a little bit clearer?
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Hang in there. Okay, new business. Did that. Bids and requests for proposals, town administrator.
H1.
I'm H1, is to go to bid for auditing services, as described in your backup materials, an annual event.
Is, is this, this is what...
Three years.
Three years, sorry.
This is what the treasurer, we just went, we just had to...
Yeah, the other, they just were here, yeah.
A couple of meetings ago.
Shall not exceed three years. You could do one, two, or three.
Any questions?
The only question that comes to mind is that it's, it's a hard copy that we require for the, the response to the...
These are all basically the requirements of the state, and we have to follow them.
They require a hard copy? Boy, modern world we live in, huh?
That's correct. I mean, just as they require it to be received by the town administrator, as opposed to, normally the bids would come to the town clerk. But this is their, their document.
Councilor, this goes back and forth between the auditor generals and the town. I kept sending back drafts back and forth, because remember, you are auditing, town is auditing the treasurer's office, she can't be involved in this.
I know, but it would be so much easier if you just email a PDF copy, instead of posting...
Listen, they change everything in this that they want. You keep going till they're satisfied, and they give you the okay.
Brett, you deal with the feds, you know that they do the same thing. They tell you they're gonna say paper, and they require you to have 10 copies of it.
Yeah, I know. And then their offices are located in the old Meatpacking District, somewhere up by a pier, and they're gonna take a taxi.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to advertise the RFP for audit services as outlined in item H1.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Where will it be advertised?
We can advertise it. Providence Journal, but there's also, this is a trade, so we can find their, their trade journal. It's probably much more efficient to advertise to the people who can actually do the work directly than spending 900 bucks for the journal. We'll talk it over.
I think the, the, the state maintains a list of the people who are authorized, certified to do it.
Can't you just send it direct to them?
Well, I think we're, I think we're obligated to advertise also.
We're obligated to advertise it, yes.
Should there be someone else in another state, or who was not yet approved, who wants to become authorized to do it, we have to do that as well.
Anything else? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, aha, Mr. Wojcicki, items and announcements.
We've had two employees retire, or one is about to retire. The building inspector, building official, zoning official, Mr. Eames has retired, his position is now vacant. And Rick Barrett, who is one of our facilities, folks will retire on March 13th. To the, a couple of days, right. So to the extent that I can, knowing them for two weeks, we thank them for their service, and wish them the best as they go along with the rest of their lives. The building inspector's position does put the town in a pinch, because it is a public safety official. If there were to be a fire, we would have to call a building inspector to make, render judgment about structural integrity. So the cleanest method for dealing with this gap in time appears to be, to allow the state building official to exercise his authority, and make an appointment of a qualified inspector to the local level. I'm not gonna get into a long, complicated explanation, but the town's insurance only applies to those people that are directly appointed by, employed by the town, or subject to a shared services agreement with another community. None of those conditions exist at present. And even though my predecessor attempted to appoint an alternate building official, he did not have the authority to do so. And that's really not completely copacetic with the interlocal trust. So in order to make, make sure that the person going on other people's property has with liability coverage and workers' compensation coverage, must be appointed by the appointing authority. And at this point, by the time we advertise this position and get somebody here permanently, we might as well subject ourselves to the judgment of Jack Layden, the state building official, for that interim period. So we have, Andy got a list of qualified people, because this is another one of those situations where you have to meet all the qualifications in Rhode Island, in order to practice this profession in Rhode Island. So we have a list, we're gonna call down that list and get some qualified names, and make our recommendations to Mr. Layden, and have him supply us with somebody as soon as possible. I already covered the facilities manager, that position has to be posted to other interested union members.
Could I just ask a question?
Sure.
What do we do in the interim? I'm sure there are people who, so between now, and when we kinda work with the state to get someone appointed, what do folks in town who need that service, I mean, what's their recourse here?
My personal objective is to make that word interim as short as possible. So my hope would be, I don't know how fast Mr. Layden can move, but my hope would be we could do this within the days, within a business day. And since we both spoke to him today, and talked about different people and different objectives, and I sort of related some of the existing notices, notices of violation we have in town, and some of the other concerns that have been raised, I think Mr. Layden appreciates the urgency, and will give us somebody, certainly before the end of the week, I would hope. We have a number of things we need to sign off on from that person.
Anything to add, Mr. Tice?
Nope. I will just say, we did contact the office, actually, last week in anticipation, but Mr. Layden was on vacation, or at a conference, I'm not sure, but he was away. But he did call us both back today.
Good. Anything else, Mr. Wojcicki?
Nothing else.
How's your first two weeks?
Well, it looks like it's, we're setting the stage for the exciting next two weeks with the street committee and everybody else. Everybody I've met in town has been very gracious in their greetings, and I've said it before, I consider it an honor to serve, and I hope to live up to everybody's expectations, but so far, I've enjoyed, it is possible to enjoy your work. I have enjoyed my work the last two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Council, announcement, comments, and questions?
I'd like to make an announcement for the arts council. The arts reception will be this Sunday, March 16th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the town hall. It will feature over 40 pieces of art by 15 different artists. Features the art of students and first-time presenters for their artistic endeavors. As you can see, it's, they're, they're wonderful, they're beautiful, there's so many of them. The arts council invites you to join us on March 16th. Also, on that date, we'll also be seeing Kohog Man, will be at the town hall.
Kohog Man?
Kohog Man. He'll be here, so please stop by and, and join us for, for a fun time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Trabbitt. Anyone else from the council?
Go to the parade, that's all.
Okay, I just have one thing I wanna say, is that, as you all know, we closed the deal on the gas station at Grenelles Beach, and I just wanna say that I was overwhelmed with phone calls, telling me, one particular one, was a woman who'd been in town many, many, many years, and said she thought she'd never lived to see that, that we would be able to get back part of the waterfront. And it just shows you how important the waterfront is to this town. And I think this council should be commended for taking that step, and ensuring that we will have access to the waterfront for today, tomorrow, and for years to come.
With grant money?
With grant money, yes. Town solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. President. K1 is a memorandum in response to an item from the last council meeting, question about the library construction. I provided you with a memo, and a lot of attachments on building permits and inspections. There was a building permit pulled for the library, there was an electrical permit pulled for the temporary electrical service, and there have been a whole series of inspections under the 128 certification, both the engineers, a lot of tests of concrete and so forth, and also the stormwater management plan as well. The town's consulting engineer, Commonwealth Engineering, has been on the site. And Mr. Eames was on the site as well. Although he is entitled to rely on it, there's nothing prohibiting the inspector from also making inspections on his own as well. Does not have to rely solely on the 128 certification.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, did you, in this, whatever you wanna call this, just talk to the electrical inspector, our electrical inspector?
I didn't, I did not talk to the electrical.
You did.
I did.
Okay. Did he raise any concerns? Because that was sort of the crux of the...
No, none. The crux of the comment in the meeting was whether or not the building was gonna be properly grounded and kept neutral. So when, different, I spoke both to the construction supervisor and to the library board of trustees, and I specifically asked to be shown that part of the plans where that specific component is going to be installed, and the building kept neutral, grounded. It's there, it's in the future, and when the rest of the electrical work is done, and those full set of electrical permits is pulled, that will be part of the work at that time. It's not being done right now, because it's not the phase of the project they're on. I thought that was a very good explanation, and not being in a position to second-guess the structural engineer who signs off on the section 128, I think that's the way they're gonna proceed in the project.
Is there, is there just, one of the other issues kinda related to that was the notion that any public citizen can kinda walk on premise and investigate or explore? I don't, that felt squishy to me, and it was, I don't know if there is clarity around that, so...
Well, I didn't address it in my memo, but I can address it now. No, it's not. It's, no, just because you're a public citizen, it happens to be a public building in the end, does not give you the right to go on it. I mean, we have all sorts of regulations, you know, just 'cause we have a, we have a town landfill, you can't go there anytime you want, just because you're a public citizen and it happens to be public property. This is clearly a construction zone, there are various hazards, you have to be escorted, you'd have to have a hard hat, so there is no right for a public citizen to just appear on it. The building official, electrical official, town officials have the right, just like they would of any project, public or private. But just because it's a public building, does not give private citizens the right to go on at any time.
But what I will say is, every citizen has a right to ask, and I think by my answer tonight, I demonstrated that I'll make a good faith answer, attempt to get a good, solid answer for someone, if they wanna take the time to ask me their question.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Status of McLaughlin case?
K2, yep, is a short memo I forwarded you from Assistant Solicitor D'Enzo. You'd asked about the status of it, the decision from the judge, and enforcement of the decision to remove the offending structure. And as indicated, we were waiting for the transcript, because it was a bench decision from the judge. So we've got the transcript, which does in fact say that we have to make further application for the equitable relief, and we are filing that, and we'll be on the next Newport County motion day on April 7th.
Anything from the council?
Is there anything more we do in this space, or is that the next step?
Right. Well, that'd be the next step. We'd ask for an order from the court to order its removal. The court presumably grant that order, or not, but if they grant the order in a period of time, and if it's not removed, we would most likely have to go back in for a contempt citation, if it's not removed within the reasonable period of time that the court provides. What I'm, what I'm trying to avoid is having the town have to undertake the cost of removing the structure. We would obviously want the individual to do that, not the town.
Do you have confirmation that we're on the April 7th docket, or schedule?
I don't have confirmation yet that we are on it. I believe we, I believe we are. I did talk to Ms. D'Enzo about it, and she was filing the paperwork. I'm not 100% sure, but I believe we are.
When you get confirmation, could you just let us know?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lambert. Oh, I'm sorry, town clerk.
I just had one announcement. The council, we were reserving March 31st for a workshop on the historic district. I received notice from the planning board, I don't know if I forwarded it, because I was off last week, but the planning board, they're not ready to go forward, and so they're just saying, leave it be till they get more information. So I'm still holding, March 31st should be there, anything that the council does want on a workshop, it's still our fifth Monday in March, but I will not be setting this for it. Okay? That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Lambert.
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, chapter 42, section 46, 5A2, way potential litigation, and 42, 46, 5A4, way-related investigation.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And staying closed, executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, chapter 42, section 46, 5A2, way litigation.